Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of July 13, 2017. We're having a special meeting regarding the Baylands, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Please note for the record that all council members are present. Thank you. Item three, adoption of agenda.
Move adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to item four, old business, Brisbane Baylands planning applications, Baylands concept plans, Brisbane Baylands specific plan, case SP-01-06, general plan amendment, cases GP-01-06, GP-01-10, and related final environmental impact report, Universal Paragon Corporation applicant. And we'll start off with a staff presentation, including an update on requests for data and responses to questions. And I just want to thank my colleagues for all being really so diligent in submitting questions and comments. I was really impressed by the quality and the detail of the questions. So, thank you. Go ahead.
In relation to all the questions, the term I thought was not diligent so much as thorough. And we are working on those, and at your meeting of the 24th, we'll have responses to those questions, some of which will be, the response to this question requires a study that's still ongoing. And so, some of the answers require some more detailed study, but we'll actually have definitive answers to the large majority of those questions for your meeting on the 24th. And the reason we wanted to meet this evening ahead of actually having those responses back is to talk about vision. What are the basic things that each of you would like to see occur in the Baylands, no matter what it is the ultimate determinations may be? So, in future meetings, we will talk about, actually at the next meeting, responses to the questions you've asked. Following that, we'll talk about what are the land uses that you believe are appropriate or could be appropriate for the Baylands. And one of the issues, and one of the things that happens at your typical hearing, is you'll go through the hearings, and then it will go back to the council, and then you're each asked, "Okay, what do you think? Let's make a motion." And given the complexity, that is a long way off till we would actually ask you, "Are you ready to make a motion?" But what we will do, in terms of this process, is walk through tonight, what are the basic operative principles that everything at the Baylands needs to be aimed towards? We will then talk about, at the first meeting in August, what are the mix of land uses that would be appropriate for the Baylands? What types of uses would be appropriate? And then, what are the development intensity and what are the distribution of uses? All of that kind of following the decision tree that we shared and talked about on the 19th. And so, the basic direction that council had provided on the 19th, as we understand it, is to develop a plan using the elements from the Planning Commission's recommendation, from the applicant's proposal, and build a plan that is maybe somewhere between them, or by the time you're done talking, it may be the commission's recommendation, may be the applicant's. But use that as the starting point. And what that means is, going back to that decision tree, the next step after, what are the basic principles? And you use that as a filter, we would talk about what are the land uses that are appropriate. So, I know the community has been wondering, at what point does the council get to a discussion of residential yes or no? And that will start that discussion on August 7th. And we will get the listing of deliberations meetings, these kinds of subjects that we would be asking you to address at those meetings. So, August 7th, be mix of land uses. And that being a key issue, but even more important and more basic than, what are the land uses you believe are appropriate for the Baylands? Are what are the overarching planning principles and environmental principles that must be met, no matter what you decide for land uses? As you look at the series of land uses and possible land uses for the site, how do we decide what's appropriate, what's not? You know, as opposed to, "I like it, I don't like it." And so, that's the idea of tonight, is to discuss those basic principles that you can then, when discussing development intensity, types of uses, you'll have a set of rules to work with, very general rules to work with, that start saying, "This use fits, this development intensity fits," or it doesn't. And so, these basic principles, think of in terms of a general plan, is what is the goal of the plan? Or, as you mentioned at the last meeting, what is our vision for the Baylands? How do we know if the applicant's proposal, if the commission's recommendation, fits what it is we want? And so, that will be the basic discussion that we would be looking for from the council tonight. The idea would be to create a filter or a test that you can use in later meetings. Does this work? Does this fit? And not just having answers to questions, which you will have in those future meetings, but how do we apply those answers to, do we want housing or not? What is the right development intensity? What is the way we want the Baylands to be? How do we deal with the answers to those questions? And that's part of the filter that we'll create tonight, or part of the purpose of these general principles. This admonition, this warning, we did this at every Planning Commission meeting where they went through deliberations. Anything you discuss tonight, anything that sounds like a decision, any direction you give, and throughout all these deliberations, is subject to reconsideration. So, this is not a moment that you decide and take a 180-degree turn. This is just direction in helping put together a package at the end, that you can then say, "Yes, this is what we want," or "This is what we don't want." So, everything you discuss tonight, anything that sounds like a conceptual decision, a decision, is subject to reconsideration, and nothing is final until, as mayor, you have at least three votes and bang the gavel. But this is just providing direction for later hearings. So, what are these basic principles? The basic principles that were laid out in the staff report come from a number of different places. They come from the Planning Commission's recommendation. They come from the applicant's proposal. They come from the project objectives laid out in the EIR. Why are we doing anything? Why are we looking at the Baylands? What is it that the applicant wants? What is the outcome that the city ultimately wants? And that's part of where these all came from. The idea of community character is discussed in a couple places in the EIR. And this phrase, protect the unique small-town character, hasn't been directly used through the hearings, but as a planner, I've heard this kind of discussion is central to any large project. I think a large part of what people have talked about is, what fits with our community? And that was one of the questions asked at the Planning Commission. Would the applicant's proposal fit with the rest of the community? How would it fit? How would we make it fit? And the idea of this kind of principle is, whatever it is ultimately decided, if you agree with this, and we're not going to, I'm just going to kind of go through the package and then leave it for your discussion. But the idea of this kind of phrase is, it gives a filter. Does this fit, whatever it is, at the end, with the unique character of Brisbane? Sustainability, one of the key things the Planning Commission started with, and I think, I haven't heard any disagreement to, is incorporating the sustainability framework into the general plan. They become the basic tenants of the sustainability framework, become, if this is part of what you see as your general principles, they become some of the goals. They become some of the performance standards that we would expect for the Baylands. And so, to the extent of anything in the rest of the list are in the sustainability framework, they would become part of the general plan, if this is a principle that you would agree with. The way that that would occur, because I know that question's been asked, is if you agree with this tenant, and at the point that you would actually give direction, bring us back final findings at the end of this process, part of what we would bring back is specific general plan goals, specific policies that would apply to the Baylands out of the sustainability framework, if that's what you desire. Open space, the basic open-space tenants that the commission had recommended, large blocks of unbroken, unbroken blocks of open space, provide for restoration of wetlands, continuity of flow in open space through the Baylands. And in open spaces, we're using here, is a little bit different than open space versus open area. We're not distinguishing between ownership. We're talking about land for recreation, land for protecting resources, protecting public health. And that, separate from this large unbroken block of publicly accessible open space, individual developments would have their own independent open-space areas. Protect key habitat areas, one of the basic principle. Protect the Brisbane Lagoon and habitat areas adjacent to it, and do a couple things. One is relocate Lagoon Road north, would expand the buffer between the road, the landfill, and the lagoon. And limiting water-based recreation or prohibiting it, so that there's no disturbance of aquatic habitats. Public safety, and these are some basic, basic principles that you have talked about and the community has talked about. Whatever the ultimate land use is, it must be safe for the public, in relation to site remediation, landfill closure, geologic hazards, seismic hazards, flooding, traffic safety, public services, police and fire. And this basic principle would then be translated into specific policies and specific performance standards to be met. The landfill remediation closure process, being an active participant, we talked about this the night that you had discussed remediation, and the idea of an independent consultant to provide third-party review, implementation of best practices, the highest practical standard for whatever uses you ultimately decide, independently reviewing studies, providing comments to the regulatory agencies. And I think this is also key, because the question's been asked several times, "What if we don't agree?" And in the sustainability framework, it talks about negotiating any differences in the standards, implementation requirements between the city, the regulatory agencies, and the developers, if you don't agree with the outcome of that regulatory process. Independent monitoring and report, and then, I think, this has come up several times in a number of your questions, make sure that there is a financial mechanism for long-term independent monitoring of the performance of remediation, not just applicant, landowner reporting back. The idea also, in terms of process, is to lay out and make sure that, based on the land uses you believe could be appropriate, and I'll use that term rather than are appropriate, the land uses that could be appropriate for the Baylands would be your general plan policy. And you would lay out, as part of that policy, these land uses would be appropriate for the Baylands, if. And one of them is, there's an approved Title 27 closure, remedial action plan, and all of what we just said, and those goals that you had talked about, in terms of highest practical standards and so on. But that before, and this is also an EIR mitigation measure, before a specific plan would be approved, there would be a RAP remedial action plans and landfill closure, ready for approval by the regulatory agencies. The reason for that process is approving a specific plan now could lead to RAP remedial action plans or landfill closure, saying, "Those land uses are not permitted, now you've got to go back into the specific plan." So, the process laid out in the EIR was, we have information to say, "These land uses could be appropriate at a general plan level, and now applicant, you've got to go back and prove it to us with site-specific documentation, the remedial action plan, so on." Once that is all done, and there is a remedial action plan, there are landfill closure plan, and you've negotiated whatever ultimate settlements there may need to be, only then, following the sequoia documentation, an actual physical remediation of the site, would physical development of land occur within the Baylands. So, there's a lot of series of approvals, and you have a number of checkpoints, even after what is in front of you now with the Baylands. And then, in relation to sea level rise, looking for natural solutions to protect development, as opposed to just physical barriers raising the site, and so on. In relation to existing land uses, a number of these things have been talked about a lot. Restoring the roundhouse, making sure what's around the roundhouse is compatible with it, protecting the ability for recology to modernize and expand their current operations within the Baylands. That is very different than saying, "We're approving the recology expansion." This is just providing the opportunity and the ability for them to come back and prove their case later, and not forestalling it. And yes, even maintaining that ability for recology to expand in the future could be made compatible with the applicant's proposal. So, that is not by saying, "We want to retain that ability," making a decision in opposition to the applicant's proposal. The other thing that is important, or was important in some of the discussions, is providing the plan, whatever the outcome is, provides for relocating Golden St. Lumber, so you maintain that sales tax generator. Define land use in terms of individual planning areas, maintain transit orientation, those are some of the important things. And when you look at the basic land use areas, these are land use areas on the Baylands. And we've shown here how, for example, Kinder Morgan would fit, and some other areas. But these basic layout of planning areas are consistent between the applicant's proposal, the CPP scenario, the Planning Commission recommendation. These are really very, very similar, largely because there's physical features on the site that define and break things up. Caltrain is a fixed line, the Geneva Extension, the creek, so that land uses would be organized around those areas. Water supply, you've had discussion of water supply, and based on that discussion, the commission's recommendation, is that with the submittal of a specific plan, identify a water source that has a reasonable likelihood of being approved, that's capable of providing enough water. Provide environmental analysis project level for that water supply, and prior to any site-specific development, every agreement in place, and prior to any certificate of occupancy, physical water being available. So, basically, setting up a process in the general plan for the water supply. And this is, in a way, generic. This concept, this process, does not presuppose that the proposed agreement that is in place meets that first criteria. That would be a decision you would make with your later review. The basic principle is, before we look at a specific plan as a community, there needs to be identified a water source. It needs to have a reasonable likelihood of being approved and capable of providing adequate water supply. And part of what you would decide, if you would want to look at the specific plan, is, does the water supply being proposed meet those standards? Because I know there's a discussion about, is that agreement have a reasonable likelihood of being approved? Development shall pay for itself, and this comes out in a lot of different ways. Generate more revenue, the project needs to generate more revenue than it provides cost to the city, but not just in the end, 20 years from now, when it's all built. Each individual increment, as it's submitted, would need to be tested for what does it do to city revenues. And that was one of the important recommendations of the Planning Commission, not just accepting, in the end, the city comes out whole, but every increment, you come out whole. As part of development paying for itself, the development will pay for capital facilities, whether they're onsite or offsite. The appropriate infrastructure and amenities for each increment of development, which gets at phasing issues, and that phasing be known upfront in a specific plan for environmental site mitigation, transit improvements, roadway improvements, what will get done where. And so, if this is a basic principle that you, as a council, would endorse, general plan policies would be written to back this up, and then you would actually use that, these policies, these principles, to determine whether the application that's in front of you, the Planning Commission's recommendation, really this is applied more to a specific one, does this meet these standards? Police facilities plan, any large development's going to be a major change for the police department, we had that discussion, major change for fire, there needs to be a plan in place that deals with them. There was a desire for a recycled water plant, so no matter what would occur, that would be part of it. And then, consider local water storage in the Baylands, rather than trying to locate at a higher elevation. So, that was one of the desires of the commission, a basic principle, rather than trying to get a tank site on a hillside location. In relation to the high-speed rail maintenance yard, we don't know whether, where exactly it's going to happen, but the basic principles would be, we would recognize that potential, and part of what general plan policy would then say is, the high-speed rail authority must mitigate the impacts of the maintenance yard, must provide community benefits. I think it was much more blunt at the Planning Commission, one of the members said, "So, what's in it for us?" But what is the benefit to the community of getting that facility would become part of your general plan, if you would agree. And that any loss of existing and anticipated revenues to the city, like the lumber yard, like recology, like anything else, would be made up. So, with that, you also have, I think, council member Lance, you had submitted some additional goals, and we have, you know, those are on here, if you want to go through them, otherwise they're in the attachment to your addendum. But I would say that with incorporation of the sustainability framework into the general plan, and I haven't compared them, but that would be, that one policy or one principle at the beginning would incorporate all of those that were relevant to general plan issues. So, with that, be glad to take any questions, and I'll kind of set up for your discussion, and then it's all yours.
Thank you. Any questions?
Lloyd, if I may, in the staff report, at the end, it talks about next step, saying that, following this discussion of our basic principles, in the meeting of July 24th, we'll focus on the appropriate mix of land uses. And then, you said, the meeting of August 7th, we're going to do mix of land uses. So, is that...
I think we can start the discussion, or you can start. You should be ready to start that discussion. I don't know how long you will want to discuss the responses we give, but I think realistically, on the 24th, given that we have responses to the comments, we would not ask you for direction on land use, land use mix on the 24th. You can start that discussion. But the, I heard one council talk about the aha moment, when each council person reveals what it is they're thinking. The discussion is starting to lead towards some direction on individual land use, so I would look to the 7th, because I don't think we're going to get that far on land use discussion. We'll start the discussion on the 24th, but I'd be looking for direction, or staff would be looking for direction on the 7th. All righty.
Any other questions?
Can I just clarify, if I may? So, you're intending to have answers to the list, or some of the answers to questions that the council submitted and the public submitted over the time, on the 24th? And then, you said our first meeting in, that's the 24th of July?
Right.
And then, the first meeting in August, we were going to start talking about potential land use?
Right. Depending on how far we get with questions and comments regarding our responses, the council could decide to start the discussion of mix of land uses on the 24th of July. But the idea of trying to revolve around a direction in terms of land use, we won't get to that till the 7th. We won't get that far into the discussion until August 7th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Lloyd. You know, on page five of the staff report, under other considerations, the first paragraph in the second, the first sentence in the second paragraph, you say, "In addition, the focus should be on providing direction for future Baylands development on what issues need to be resolved, rather than prescribing how these issues will be resolved." So, can you go into a little bit greater detail on that?
Yeah. I just ran into this, and I'll give you an example of something very concrete, of the difference between what shall be resolved and what is a performance standard, which is what we would ask you to focus on, rather than prescribing the solution. Very concrete issue had come up on another project. It was a noise issue on a project, housing next to a commercial center, that somebody did a noise study, and the noise study said, "Build a six-foot block wall, and that will take care of it." And the issue then became, "But we don't know the grading yet. So, how do we know a six-foot block wall?" And so, the solution, rather than saying, "Your solution is build a block wall six feet," the solution that that council came to was, "You will provide a block wall of sufficient height to meet this noise standard at the residential." So, the blunt way of saying it is, what we would ask is, a lot of councils look at, one councilman said it very bluntly, a lot more than I wanted to hear, was, "I'm not going to solve the applicant's problems for him. He can solve his own problems. I'll tell him what I want the outcome to be, but he can go figure out how he's going to meet what it is I want done." And in that case, what they were looking at was, it was an industrial project, and how many trucks at night could they have onsite, operating with their units? And he said, "I'm not going to make that decision, but I'm going to tell them, in the residential neighborhood, I don't want people waking up at night hearing trucks. You go solve it." And so, what we'll do with a lot of things, we'll try and also provide you, not just with prescriptive solutions, the applicant shall do A, B, C, and D in relation to water supply, for example. That's how he laid out a process. He shall have, in order to get a specific plan approved, a water supply identified with a reasonable likelihood of being approved, that can supply adequate water. And then, it's, so that would be a policy statement from, if you agree, from the city council, and then it goes to the applicant, and you go demonstrate to us that it's adequate, that it has reasonable likelihood of being approved, as opposed to, you can make the choice, do we go do it, or do we send the applicant out? You prove to us you can do it. That also comes up a lot in remediation, with the questions of, how do we know what land use to say? Because we don't know what the remediation plan is. And in relation to remediation, the basic principles, as they've laid out, for example, in the sustainability framework, are, "It shall be safe." It shall be safe, because, and we know it will be safe, because we're going to have a third-party independent reviewer in all the meetings. We will make our comments. If we don't agree at the end, we'll negotiate it. And through this process, we will make sure that you implement best practices and the highest standard applicable. And so, then, solving it, and the specifics of how it's solved are put back to the applicant. You go figure out how you're going to meet those policies. And you've dealt with things like that with the state on a lot of different issues, AB 939, solid waste. You shall, the state said, "You shall reduce your waste stream by 50," and left it to you, as a city, to figure out how. State, in that case, is saying, "We'll tell you what we want the outcome to be, but we don't know how, so you go figure it out." It'd be the same kind of thing in relation to, if that's a basic way of going, as you think about different policies, laying out to the applicant, "It shall be, here is what we expect as a city, as our policy. You demonstrate to us that you've done that." Instead of, essentially, as one councilperson said in another city, "We're sitting here, busy proving to ourselves what the applicant ought to be doing, and let him go figure it out. I don't want to have this discussion." You can decide to go any way you want with that. And some cities will lay out, "You shall solve it this way exactly." Others lay out performance standards, whatever's more comfortable for you.
Lloyd, you know, how was it for the Planning Commission to kind of kickstart, you know, get going with their dialogue amongst themselves? Because, I mean, that, to me, is one of the things, you know, to get going.
Where do you start?
You know, because, yeah.
The Planning Commission started their deliberations, the same place that we're asking you to start, with a set of basic principles that were a little bit smaller than this, because there've been some that came out. than this, because there've been some that came out. And they went through their questions, and I sat down, and there was a long, dreadful silent pause. And if you ever, the old game show, To Tell the Truth, when everybody starts to look at each other, who's going to stand up? They kind of looked at each other. Somebody tentatively spoke, one of the planning commission members, it was like a floodgate opened. And once, once the discussion started about, what is it that, as in that case, as a planning commissioner, I want to see for the Baylands? What is it that I picture as the basic principles that have to be met no matter what? What's important to me about the outcome? It just went. That is, the hard part was getting that first statement out. No matter what goes on, this is what's important to me, is part of the outcome. And once that started, they had no problem, they had no problem discussing anything after that.
Sure. You know, at our last meeting, you know, we were going to put forth our questions and our goals. But I don't know, maybe that wasn't clear about putting forth goals.
And you don't need to think about this as formal goals, as they would say in a general plan, or in a policy document. They'll become that later. But what are the things that you, as a council member, would say, no matter what the outcome, I'm not voting on it, I would not agree with it, anything that didn't meet these rules? One of the things I've done in general plans is ask council people, even just start with one thing. What is the one thing that is most important to me in this plan that I could not live without, that if the endpoint did not have it, I wouldn't vote on it, no matter what else it was? And that's a good place. What is the one thing most important to you about the Baylands? The one principle that, whatever the outcome is, and for each of you, no matter what the other four of us may think, I want this. And, yeah, it would be, and I, I'll be a little presumptuous. I know you've all thought of that, because it's kind of hard not to in discussing anything. What's important to me about the endpoint? So if you just start with there, and ask yourself that question, and you don't have, the answer to that question that you start with doesn't have to be the one you end with, it's just starting a conversation.
I'm willing to go first, if we're going to do that.
Okay. Well, actually, before we did that, I just wanted to make a, to add a question. So we also received a copy of a report by BioRegional, which created our sustainability framework. There was, this report was commissioned by the applicant. And it, it's a review and a, an analysis of the project proposal and other options and alternatives through the lens of the sustainability framework and the one planet living principles. And my question is, you know, if we don't have it on the agenda for, you know, a future meeting, I'd like to see a presentation of that report. I found that to be very helpful in crystallizing, you know, a way to analyze the project, because it has the metric, you know, of the sustainability framework built into it, you know, the one planet living principles. So I found that to be very helpful. And I'd like to see if we can have a presentation on that, if possible, by the author, in one of the upcoming meetings.
And that could be done. And that kind of analysis, you had your sustainability framework, it had a set of 10, I think it was 10 principles. And now you have an analysis against those 10 principles. And what's being suggested here tonight is, there's a whole lot of different principles. And what, are there any other kinds of things besides those 10 principles too, that you would want ultimately to review a project against?
Right.
This is another way of thinking.
Yeah. And I like the approach that it, the report took about analyzing the local needs, the regional and the planetarian, so, and trying to find overlaps between them. And then from that, trying to crystallize, you know, what, what are the overarching principles, like you said, that we would use as a, as a, you know, a litmus test for the project proposal?
Right.
So go ahead, Madison.
Okay. So, and just thinking about, like, if I had to pick one thing that was most important to me, really the first thing that comes to mind, and I think it does, because it's the most important thing to me, is I really want to end up with something that's safe. Beyond anything, you know, I want to feel that without a shadow of a doubt, that this is something that is safe. Because I will potentially be alive when this development is built and is completed. And I want to, you know, I want, I want to be able to see something that is successful in those terms, because I would have a lot of guilt. Because I will, I will see the effects. So I will have a lot of guilt if this is something that in any way, shape, or form impacts health, and, you know, we are dealing with quite a few toxins that are present all over the site. And so for me, that is absolutely the most important thing that I consider.
Yeah, you know, I agree. I feel the same way. We know that the site is contaminated, because it hasn't been developed, I mean, it looks the way that it is, because of the toxins that are in the ground. Yeah, the other day, the sustainability, or the Bayland Subcommittee had a discussion in regards to potentially hiring Dr. Fred Lee as our consultant, our person that, you know, that would have our back. And, you know, Dr. Fred Lee's credentials are amazing. I mean, he really has extremely thorough background in remediation. I mean, all of us, I mean, we, we don't have that background. I mean, we have to trust, we have to trust someone to be our advocate. And so it's extremely important that the consultant that we do hire not only has our trust, but also has the trust of the community. And so, I mean, I think Dr. Fred Lee would be a great person, but I, you know, we'll have to see, and nothing's been finalized, of course, and there might be others out there that, that are just as good as Dr. Lee. But whoever we get, it's got to be someone that can really be a strong advocate when, you know, we're dealing with these, these agencies, that, you know, ultimately, at the end, they're the ones, they're the entities that, that's their jurisdiction, right? We're kind of separate, you know, from, from that. But that doesn't mean that we don't have a voice. And, of course, we control the land use decisions. And so ultimately, in the end, the remediation that occurs out there has to be, I think, at the most stringent level possible, so that it is safe.
Yeah. And I would say, like, secondarily, you know, I was starting to think more about this. I'd say, secondarily, I'd like to see something that really respects our small-town feel. And I think that that's something that is in, is really important to Brisbane, and is something that we've really fought to, to maintain. And so, you know, how that, how that comes about, and what shape or form that, that happens, I would like to make sure that that is a priority, something that really feels inherently Brisbane. And it's really hard to identify, like, what that is. But I think we saw it when we were talking about Parkside, and we had some of those initial renderings that came to us, or some of the initial ideas for sort of the commercial area. And some of us were, like, to some of those, because it just doesn't feel like Brisbane. And so it's kind of easier. You know, when you have it in front of you, what, what feels like Brisbane and what doesn't. Like, when we had, when there was the proposal of having just all the way, you know, through the park, it just mixed use, and just a huge wall of mixed use, you know, coming into town, we all felt like, okay, that doesn't feel like Brisbane. So that's also something that's really important to me, is just, we have a very interesting culture here, and I'd like to see, whatever happens at the Baylands, that these feel connected. I don't want to have, oh, well, that's over there, and this is over here. I want to feel like everything is part of the same city.
You know, if I could, Cliff, because you guys get past the safety part, you shot past it without the rest of us.
I don't know.
Sorry, I just want to finish.
I think everybody, just about everybody I've seen run for city council in the last 24 years has always said, "Maintain Brisbane's small-town character." And you can go back and look in the record in that. And that's kind of one of our principles that we adopted as a city, as a guide, is maintaining that. But, you know, that might be subject to different peoples on interpretation of what that means. So I know we all have ideas of what probably should go and maybe not should go out there. The deal with safety is, I think, the council would be remiss if we didn't think that safety was one of the highest priorities, you know, as a principle, regardless of what we approve as a land use. We have to approve something as a land use before we can kind of delve into the level of safety. And that comes down to what we're comfortable with as a council, either as a whole or as a partial. Either way, three votes. So that's really what it comes down to. And then move on from there. But, yeah, I agree that safety is of utmost, utmost importance, you know, as a guiding principle, basic principle, so.
Okay. Carrie?
I think, I, I agree that safety is very important. I think that finding and making sure that our EIR, that it's going to be applied to every decision we make forever, pretty much, is really adequate. And that we are looking at a baseline that is, I believe, 2010 for most of the studies. And there's a lot of information that came before that baseline was hit. And how are we going to make sure that our EIR keeps up with the information that comes in later, risks and different circumstances, and known causes, and known results that happen? And making sure that that EIR is adequate, because that's what we're going to base all our safety risks. I'm very worried that we keep using the words reasonable, and when feasible, and when it's appropriate. And what level of safety, and what level, level of, that we're going to be looking at, whether it's just for cost effectiveness, or for greenhouse gas mitigation, maybe we won't have to move the dirt, because it's going to cause too much greenhouse gas, and so it's safer to not move it. And I think that what we see in the EIR is going to be really what drives a lot of my decisions on what's appropriate. But I think that we need to really make sure, and look into that EIR document, to make sure that we're getting an appropriate amount of review, and that we have further tools available to us down the road that we can apply to the project.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think that's, that's so important. And that, that sounds like a goal for you, to have those mechanisms in place, so that whatever we do decide, that we have that type of flexibility, that, you know, once you make a decision, whatever that is, you know, that we have the opportunity, if this, if this goes in stages, that through the different stages, we can make some adjustments. Is that, is that what you're?
Part of it, part of it is that. And, you know, goals, for me, I think, are something that we need to look at down further once we have more of the information on the adequacy of the EIR and the metrics that it's been using. It's hard to say the EIR is adequate if we then find that our consultant says, "Oh, well, because the baseline in the EIR is inadequate," we're sort of stuck with that document and the tools that it gives us.
Yeah. I, you know, I, you know, I wonder about that. You know, I, I think that, you know, in this stage that we're in right now, you know, we have the applicant's proposal, and we have the CROB and planning commission's recommendation, and the CPP. And as I, okay, you know, and those were the, well, not the planning commissions, but the others, that's what was studied. We, as a council, though, can say, well, you know, I see this missing from the EIR analysis. I, you know, I want to see something that's more robust. And, you know, for, for example, I didn't think they allowed roosters up in the ridge. I guess they do.
Nice ridge.
You know, like, say, for example, like, the, having a more robust multimodal station, and how that impacts traffic. And I feel like, at least for me and the EIR, that we haven't done enough of that. And so, so I'm going to ask Lloyd, and, so, items that the council would like to see have further analysis, you know, that would require more EIR analysis, how do we go about that?
Well, and some of the comments that have been made, going back even to the planning commission hearings regarding, the EIR should have done this, should have done that, should have looked at this, should have looked at that, are limitations of the project description that the EIR was working with. So the comment it just made about working, you know, analyzing a more robust multimodal station, the EIR analyzed what was proposed.
That's right.
So one, one way of doing that is, the normal process would be, and I think that will work here in terms of getting to a decision, is as you start looking at, what is the plan that we want to see for the Baylands? What is the general plan policy we want? If a more robust multimodal station were part of that, you would describe what your expectations were in terms of the multimodal station. What are the policies we would want to see? What is our vision of that station? And then before you actually took action, we would review the EIR. Does it analyze the project as it is council now wants to approve? The issue of certification of the EIR and adequacy of the EIR, if you're going, if you would look at the end as saying, "We want to adopt the applicant's plan," then we would look at, is the EIR adequate for the applicant's plan? If what you have is modifications to the applicant's plan, or as the planning commission recommended, we would look at, how well does the EIR address the plan that we actually want to approve? And so there may be supplemental studies in, maybe not. And to the other question about, talking about a 20, 30-year build-out, how do we keep an EIR and its studies up to date, so that 10 years from now, we're not making decisions based on 10-year-old technology, 10-year-old baseline, or even older baseline? Part of what you could then look for as part of general plan policy in relation to the issue you raised is, how do we maintain up-to-date baseline studies, up-to-date environmental studies, keep them updated over time? Because no matter what the EIR, any studies you do today are going to be aged as time goes on. So how do we handle projects coming in as this study's age over time would be part of the policies? And one of the things I wrote down as adding to the principles, because that, addressing that concern is not up on that, on that list. But that is something to look at, building that model so you have it over time. It's 20 years, it's a long build-out time.
A lot of the studies that are in the current EIR are over 20 years old to begin with. And we're just getting to the decisions whether we're going to certify the EIR. So, you know, that is something that has a concern of mine. A goal.
Yeah.
Concern, goal.
Okay. All right, great. So from my perspective, you know, like I said, I really, the Um, so, from my perspective, um, you know, like I said, I re- I really, um, the, the bioregional report really resonated with me, and, and what that report said, said was that, um, we need to look at it from a planetary perspective, that's what is of utmost importance. Of course, we want to look at it regionally and locally as well, but, you know, the most important thing is that we have, whatever we approve out there, that it has to be a development that does not, um, increase carbon emissions, um, and that it, so, you, you know, ideally, it would have lower carbon emissions, or it would have, um, the largest carbon savings, and also, uh, the, the biggest, that would have the biggest environmental benefit. Um, so I would want to have a development that would not increase the congestion regionally and locally, as well as air pollution, and that, um, the remediation, to me, is really important, so whatever gets approved would have to pay for that remediation. Um, and, um, you know, I, I'd like to, to look at it from the regional and planetary perspectives, um, first, to make sure that those standards are met, um, for carbon emissions, because I, you know, I think the environmental sustainability, not just to be a model, we, of course, we want to be a model, but we also, you know, we are such a, an environmentally-minded community, and I think it would be really hypocritical of us if we approved of a development that caused more carbon emissions, you know, because what we're trying to do is be leaders in sustainability, so we want to really walk the walk and talk the talk. Um, and also, um, you know, I agree, you know, with the safety of, obviously, we want to make sure that what we approve is of the highest safety standards that we feel comfortable with, um, and I'd like to see ways that we can, like Madison said, to really incorporate the Baylands into Brisbane and make it feel connected, not like a, a separate city or a separate, um, neighborhood, but find ways to really bring the residents or people who work there, you know, whoever's visiting the Baylands, to make them feel like they are a part of Brisbane and they really reflect the small-town character.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I agree with that, 100%. You know, um, we're never going to be able to take Central Brisbane and plop it down into the Baylands, but we can apply our values, and, and, and I think that, that, that's, yeah, I, I think it's just so important that, that, that we flush out what are those values, and I think you, you, you mentioned some, you know, Laurie, you know, about being sustainable, you know, you know, not creating a larger carbon footprint. Um, I mean, I think we're a community that really cares about the environment. Um, you know, Madison, I mean, I, I, I look, you know, being a parent, you know, I look at the Baylands as, as our child, right, it's our offspring, and so, um, you know, as any, you know, parent for their child, you want to give them all the tools to be successful. Um, you don't want to put them down, you want to lift them up, and I, I think, uh, for us, as, as council members, we're extremely fortunate to be sitting here, and, you know, to be voted in by the, the, by our community to make those types of, of decisions, but we're also responsible for educating the public and, 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 uh, inspiring them to, to give us their, their feedback. You know, when I was putting together these goals, and, you know, I was trying to figure out, well, what, you know, how, how do I, how to wrap my head around such a large project? I mean, it's so complex, and it's a lot of things going on. Um, and, you know, for me, helping to, to put together that sustainability framework, it, it gave me a, a, a good foundation. You know, Ray Miller's not here on the council anymore, so we lost that knowledge of, of, you know, really, you know, months and months putting energy and thought into that, to that framework, but one of the nice things that we did about having that framework was having the Open Space and Ecology Committee have a member be a part of that, and Plan, the Planning Commission, and, and the Park and Rec Commission. And, and so, all of our advisory groups have really put substantial effort into that document, and so, um, I, I highly recommend, you know, going with your direction, Madam Mayor, uh, you know, having Bioregional do a presentation incorporating our framework so that we can use it as, as the tool that it was intended to be, uh, and so, yeah.
Well, Cliff, let me, can I, can I stop you there? Because the, the framework's not a driving force, it's really, we use that framework as, the driving force is what we're comfortable with the setting.
Absolutely.
On, as a land use, not the framework. The framework is not the driving force, you know, I mean, people have their ideas about stuff, but it goes back to one thing, I think the key thing that you said was values. Now, values, people have differing values, okay, and I've heard it constantly throughout the hearings, differing values, and we take all this information, pour it in a funnel, you know, and what strikes us in our values, our individual values, because I've served on councils and, and this is, this is, the honest truth is, there were council people who didn't have values, but they, no, I'm, and I don't mean it, it's a slight, you know, their values were differing, definitely differing from mine, but.
There you go.
They wanted to do the right thing, so their altruism was there for doing the right thing, but it wasn't value-driven, y- you know what I mean? So, you know, and I'm not saying that, you know, people are valueless or anything like that, I mean, they have their certain ones, but I'm talking about on making decisions, you know, for the city, that, you know, sometimes doesn't resonate with what their values are, but they want to make the right decision, and so that's the whole purpose of having, you know, the, the, the community input and everything like that.
Well, you know, that, that, that framework is, is not a plan.
Yeah, it's not a driver.
Right, I, I, yeah, and it.
It's to use.
It ever was.
Supplement.
Just, just to be clear on it.
Right? It's, it's goals, um, you know, I mean, and that's what it is. You, you, the task of that committee was to look at what are the sustainability principles that are recognized throughout the world, right? And we chose One Planet Living because it seemed like the best mechanism to, to be able to do that. Um, and then the framework was, was put together, looking at things like zero carbon, zero waste, and zero water, and.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's up to the community, up to the council, to say, okay, here's this framework, does this represent my values? And then if it does, okay, then how, then how do we use that to make decisions in the planning process? And, and, and that's, that's where we are, I mean, it's, it's, because there's so many things going on, you need a base, you need some kind of foundation for which to, to stand on.
So, if I may, um, I, I think it's, I have not had a chance to review the documentation that the applicant gave us on the One Planet.
I have not either.
Information, it came too late, and so, as far as, for my information, I'm, I'm not relying on that information, um, I will look at it, but it's not part of the driving force in our conversations tonight. Um, I think it was very interesting with the, um, speaker series that, um, many people did come and say, of the group, that businesses can be green also, that can be net zero, the Lucille Packard Building, um, different buildings didn't necessarily have to be residential, and when we looked at One Planet Living to do our sustainability framework, it was not, um, driven by housing or no housing, it was supposed to be a very overarching, um, sustainability framework, and I, and I do think that, um, net zero energy and energy production is really important in the development, but I would not truly be for having the developers', um, concept that they've brought forward, their information come and be reinforced with another presentation when they are now being hired by developer instead of by the city, I think that would be a conflict at this point in our deliberations.
You know, I haven't seen the document, so I can't say, though, I, I, I do agree with you that it is awkward that, uh, that, uh, that, that document that's been put out by Bioregional was paid for by the applicant. Uh, is that, is that correct?
It's true, we pay for, for everything.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, okay.
It, it's a, I mean, I read it, and it, it, to me, it seems like an objective document that basically takes the sustainability framework and applies it to the different, to the project proposal and other options, and.
Yes.
It doesn't necessarily say, I, I, you know, I, I approve of the pro- project proposal, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of different options and a lot of different, um...
Well, and I agree that it, it, I'm happy to, to read it and take it into consideration, but to have them come back now that they are a developer-sponsored, um, consultant at this point, I think, would be awkward.
Uh, you know, I, you know, I, I, I would not taint that relationship that way.
Because all of the Baylands process has been paid for by the applicant.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. You're, you're making a big assumption there, and I, I don't think that's fair.
I, I'm.
You know, there could be some really good information for us, and, and, you know, to help us, you know, in this deliberation process.
Okay, well, I, I, like I said, I have not read this.
Yeah, I've read it, so.
I have it here, and we, I mean, you know, we can read it on our own, it doesn't necessarily...
We can read it on our own, and I think that that's important, it came in too late to be part of this package, and so, I can't say that I've studied it, but you asked that they, or that suggested that, and I think it was actually the mayor that suggested perhaps they could come and give another presentation, and I think that that might be.
Consult.
Awkward to ask for, right, at this point.
It, unless, unless we're ready to approve either the Planning Commission or, or, you know, the applicant's proposal, or the alternative energy proposal, that's what this was reflecting, it's analyzing those, those things, and, and if we're not going to approve one of those, this is just another document of information, okay, until we set a land use, and it keeps coming down to this, and I don't know how many times Lloyd has said this, we need to just come up with what we're comfortable with as a council on land use, and then all this stuff can be dumped in there, all the analyzation, what could be deemed safe, you know, to what level, to this, to that, you know, all these questions, because there's a mountain of questions out there, and it'd take years to go through those questions if we have no direction of where we're going. The direction is, is we set a land use, and if it's approval of what the applicant is wanted, or, or the Planning Commission, or a variation of what we come through, what we come through with the land use, then that's the driving force, and that Lloyd is...
But I'm under the impression we're doing that August 7th, so.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, we're having to, I think it, obviously, it's easier to know where you're going when you have a land use, uh.
Yeah.
Priorities, right, than you're able to know what to focus on, and some things fall by the wayside because they're no longer relevant to discuss, but, you know, we, to my understanding, aren't there yet in our deliberation, so I'm trying to figure out, since we're not there, what are we doing now?
Well, you know, one of the things, Madison, that we talked about was, was putting forth some goals, and so, um, you know, you guys have this document, so I put some, some time in, into it, right? So, you know, I, in, you know, and I wrote this before the staff report came out, so, and I had no collaboration with staff or with Lloyd, this is just after our council meeting, you know, I got behind my computer and started, and started typing. Um, you know, and, and for me, to me, making the site the most sustainable that it can be is the, the number-one goal for me, but safety and remediation is all part of sustainability, I mean, you, you can't have it unless the site is safe. And so, um, you know, I, I've laid out some basic, um, some basic principles, like, you know, the first one I have is remediation, and the second one is quality of life, you know, that, that the development should not have a negative effect on our city. Uh, open space, zero carbon, being energy-neutral, zero waste, the waste, zero wasting of water, uh, dealing with, with global warming, transportation, sustainable materials, sustainable food, you know, how, you know, the, the, the building design, I mean, these, these buildings should look awesome, they shouldn't look, you know, like Mission Bay, that place is cold and sterile, and they should be very, uh...
Yeah, a lot of these are in the sustainability framework, what you're, uh, it's kind of...
So, some, some that, you know, I have, um, but then, you know, after that, then I started to look at the site in different chunks, that was easier for me to understand how it all gets connected together, and, and so I started off with the lagoon area because I felt, well, the lagoon area seems to have the least amount of controversy, you know, and maybe, maybe we could talk about, you know, break it up into chunks, maybe that might be easier for us, and then, and then just say, okay, well, what do we want the lagoon area to look like? What do we want the Mission Blue Nursery area to look like? And, and then just kind of go around the site. Um, you know, also, and I'll just be honest with you guys, I mean, it's been hard not being able to say how I feel about the site, and it wasn't until we all agreed that, hey, you put forward your goals, put forward your questions, and so, that's what I've, I've done. Um, and, um, another thing that I, that I did when I put this together is that I wanted to back it up. I didn't want to just, like, put out a goal and say, okay, yeah, there you go. No, I, I, I attached a link to it so I could back it up, because, you know, when we, at the end of the line, we're going to have a, have to negotiate with the developer, right, we're going to have a development agreement, and if we're going to want to incorporate these high standards of sustainability, we're going to have to back it up, and so, you know, our goals have to be solid, and you're right, Clark, they, they need to represent our values, and when I put this thing together, I was thinking about our community's values, and, and granted, maybe I have a different perspective on what our community values are than, than the rest of you, or maybe I don't, or maybe, you know, we're, we're 80% on some and 60%, you know, we're all different, so we're all going to come from different, different, uh, perspectives, but one of the things that I did notice in the questions that we proposed is that they're, they were all geared towards making sure that that site is something that, that we're, we're proud of, that we feel is, is going to stand the test of time in regards to safety and how it impacts city resources and, um, just the longevity of, of the development.
Yeah, but you, you kind of delved into land uses on your, on the goals, so...
You know, there were no guidelines or goals, I mean, you, one of your goals was, uh, you know, you, you want to see Golden State Lumber out there, that's a use.
That's an existing use.
That, well, yeah.
Maintain that.
Yeah, no, that's an existing use, uh, you know, you like to see Rocology expanded. Both those uses, I agree, those should happen, and I, and I hope that Golden State Lumber builds a great showroom, and I hope that Rocology, uh, when they do their expansion, that it's, uh, that their buildings are at the highest level of, uh, green building, um, you know, and we're going to have a development agreement with them, you know, we're going to sit down and we're going to, we're going to hash out what we want, and they're going to tell us what they're, they're going to want, and, and you, 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 through those negotiations, you, you hopefully come up with something that, that both parties can agree to, so that you can move forward. So, you know, I know, I mean, is this, so are my goals, or what you're saying, Clark, is, you know, a little bit too much for you at this time?
No, no, it's not, I couldn't... No, no, it's not, I could, I could have dealt with it at our last meeting, I mean, you know, I'm, like you, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to roll on it.
I'm ready, I'm ready to go, too.
You know?
So, look, so I put together this list of goals.
Yeah.
And, you know, I mean, I, I would like to see all the goals talked about.
Can I, can I just say something?
All your goals, I would like to have discussions about them.
Madison? So, I've heard you say this a couple of times, Cliff, and this just has me a little bit concerned. You say, one of your goals is to have the most sustainable project possible, and that sounds great. I'm just concerned, because, you know, we've heard from a lot of housing advocates and specialists that for something to truly be sustainable, that housing must be incorporated, and I'm not prepared to talk about where I am on that issue right now, but I would hate to see us say, well, just like Lori said, you know, we're a city that wants to model sustainability, and then, you know, we develop a, I don't want to be contradictory, right, so I don't want to say, we want the most sustainable project possible, and then in a few meetings say, oh, well, you know, we, we've decided that we're not interested in housing. That really seems like, that people would argue, well, you've just, well, how can you say that? Because you just said you want the most sustainable project possible. So I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves, I want a sustainable project. I want, I want a project also that we can be proud of and that fits our community values like we've been talking about. So I just don't want to put something out there that's very stringent, that then puts us on one path that is hard to, it doesn't give us very much wiggle room if it's the most sustainable.
Yeah, well, you know, I mean, look, I, I'm giving you my goals.
Right.
Right, I'm one council member.
Right.
Right, and just because I put out those goals, that doesn't mean that now that's what we're gonna do.
I'm just reacting to what you're saying.
Right, and so, you know, the idea about sustainability, I mean, you can have green buildings, right, green buildings is a component of sustainability, but to not have people be part of the overall plan, you know, then it's not sustainable, that, I'm sorry, you know, that's like saying that, you know, clean coal is an alternative form of, of alternative energy, right, of, of alternative form of energy, so we're not there, right, I mean, I, again...
I'm just not prepared to, like, come on board with what your goals...
You know what, I'm not, you know what, let me take a step back, I'm, I'm just putting this out there, I'm not telling people, okay, you gotta buy into this, what I'm saying is that let's flush out, what are our ideas, what are our goals? Lori put forth something that she thinks will help in that process. Now, whether UPC has paid for it or not, I mean, UPC paid for the sustainability framework, but that came from, from us, and so...
You know, I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I, I am open to what every speaker has to say, and I am able to take into consideration bits of information, and, you know, I have, I'm able to, to absorb things from every speaker, and so I, I think that I, you know, I think that it would still be valuable for me, I, I'm fully equipped to say, to use my own judgment about the information that comes before me, I don't want to just make that judgment now and say, oh, well, I'm not sure if we should trust this information when I haven't heard it, so I would rather have the presentation, evaluate the information, and if I find it to be valuable, I find it to be valuable, I think, I think I can evaluate something with my own lens, so I, I don't see any harm in it, you know, you know, some of us may find it more valuable than others, and that's okay.
Yes.
So, Madison, for me, you know, the importance of saying, you know, I want a sustainable development, something that doesn't increase carbon emissions and cause more traffic and congestion, that is important, because that provides the, the test that you then apply when you're looking at different potential land uses. So if in, you know, a few meetings from now, we're thinking about housing or no housing, we have to ask ourselves, if we put housing on, will it increase or decrease carbon emissions? And if we don't put housing on, and we put another use on the site, what effect will that have on the environment? So I think that's really important, and I, I understand what you're saying, you don't want to be seen as hypocritical, but I think the question is there to give you a chance to take a harder look at the conclusion, you know, to not, to not jump to that conclusion, but to really look at it from this environmental lens, to make sure that you are choosing a land use that meets that criteria.
Right, and so I'm willing, you know, I'm willing, I like Terry and Cliff, I didn't have a chance to read it, and so, you know, I can make a commitment to have it read by the next meeting, and if we would like to bring in that consultant, I'm happy to hear what they say, I'm sure I will find something of value, you know, and like I said, I'm not concerned about who pays for it, because I am confident that I, you know, I, I can evaluate the information on my own, and, you know, I can draw conclusions based on what's being said, so I'm, I'm comfortable with it, I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I, I started reading the report, but I didn't make it through it, so, you know, the pages are kind of...
Cattywampus.
Yeah, yeah, so, but that's not the reason I didn't make it through it, it was just more of a time limitation for me, but, yeah, I don't, I, I see reading the report and, and stuff is valuable, but not to have a presentation, because I said, this report is analyzing through our sustainability framework, if I understand it, their folks from, what's...
Bioregional.
Bioregional, who analyzed that and said, here's the data of what we think with these, the developers' proposed project, the planning commission's recommendation, the alternative energy, and then some other ones that, if you added more dense housing or something like that, that, you know, so, and, and that's what it's doing, it's showing out, you know, those ideas, but if we're not using those specifically, or whatever, I mean, you could use it to, to come up with whatever decision you want, but really what it comes down to is what we're comfortable with as a council on land use. And that, you know, I mean, I'm there with that, what I'm comfortable with and what I'm not comfortable with, and, and, you know, and Cliff, I, I know you put a lot of work in this, and I appreciate that, because there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that, you know, you put out your thought process, and, you know, and cited, you know, like you said, areas that you can look it up on, online, to, to say that, information to back up what your, what your thought process is, and, so, no, it's good, and a lot of it, a lot of it aligns, you know, and I just, sometimes maybe, ask Lloyd, maybe we need to work this backwards, deal with the big white elephant in the room, and...
Yeah, and, and you're going to get there pretty early in the process, and, and kind of what, what, in listening to, to the discussion of sustainability, there's, I've heard two different thoughts, one is that concept of, that the project needs to be the most sustainable project possible, which would mean that degree of sustainability would drive mix of land uses, and that's, that's one possible policy direction. The other way that I heard this was that as a council, we should decide what are the land uses we feel comfortable with, that are appropriate for the Baylands, then develop the most, most sustainable project possible, given those land uses.
Right.
And those are two very different approaches.
Yeah.
And so, part of, as you get to the discussion of, of land use, keep that in mind, you know, because one direction would be, I'll go ahead and say it, the elephant in the room, residential, you know, would the project be more sustainable with residential, therefore we should include it, or as a council, do we believe, do you believe that residential is not appropriate for the Baylands, therefore we should not include it, and then develop the most sustainable non-residential project? That's how these pieces, pieces come together. The commission struggled with, with some of those very same issues, not as directly on, on the land use issue. One that I did want to bring up is in relation to transit orientation, because you're gonna find these priorities will start playing out into the land uses and backing it.
Interconnected.
Exactly, so, for example, with transit orientation, the issue becomes, and the basic principle is maintain a transit orientation for new development, which means concentrating development in and around the Caltrain station. Where that also plays out is now when you start thinking about what types of land uses do we want, there's certain land uses that are more amenable to use of transit than other land uses, and when you start discussing intensity of development, that plays out, because the more, not just concentrating of, of this much development concentrated at the station, but creating enough to support more robust transit, so if one of your policies is a more robust multimodal transit station, that needs people and users to support it.
Mm-hmm.
So you'll, you'll play things out, out that way.
Yeah.
But the residential discussion is going to, is going to, I mean, that is at the crux of so many different things in, in what's been talked about, is at the crux of sustainability, which way and which direction do we want to take in sustainability, it's in relation to fitting with the rest of the community, small-town character, and it really comes down to how do you want to approach it, and what's important to you? And that's the reason for starting with this, the discussion of basic principles, values, and what is most important, because you've expressed in terms of sustainability and the residential component, two really different directions.
I just am not ready to get into that discussion right now, because, like I said the last meeting, I have really some burning questions, and those questions will determine how I feel about residential, I mean, like, I have my gut instincts, but I don't, I don't want to start deliberating based on gut instincts of how I feel, I want to be sure, I want to know, and I, I am not going to get into discussion now, and then come back when I have more information a week from now, and, and redo this all over again, I don't think that looks, I don't think that looks good. So I, you know, I, I'm not equipped to do that, because for me, you know, Clark, you've had all the information you need to make your decision, and, and you've been going through this process for a long time. For me, there are some things that I still need answered, and I, I think it's reasonable for me to wait to deliberate until I have my questions answered.
I, I agree, I, I feel the same way.
So I'd like to make a suggestion, then, about the Bioregional report, I'm hearing that there's some people that may not feel comfortable with having the consultant make a presentation on it. What I would like to suggest is that at the next council meeting on, on the Baylands, that we at least include a link to it through the staff report, because right now the public doesn't really have way to access that report, and through staff have a, like, a very high level presentation of the report, so that we can, because I think it is really important to our, to, to this stage of the deliberations. And I know none of you have read it by me, so it's hard for you to really comment on it, but I, I really want to make sure that not only that it's, it's in our minds, but it's in the public's view as well.
Right, and, and a decision as to whether you have a presentation can be discussed later, we, once you've had a chance to read the report, depending on what questions you may or may not have, then it's probably a more productive time to talk about whether a presentation should be done. In, in relation also to tonight, that question of the sustainability, the two different directions, you do not need to resolve that tonight, because there are a series of questions you've asked that need to be answered in order to resolve that one, and, but you've laid out the issue really clearly, and that's, that will be very helpful as we move on into other discussions. The other thing I would ask tonight, before you, you wrap this up or take public comment, however you're doing, would like to do this, is of the principles that were laid out in the staff report, are there any that you do not agree with that we need to pull out? Or are we generally okay with the discussion that, what's in here, the discussion you've had, and I know you haven't had time to review the additional ones, but any concerns as what's here, you do not need to make a final decision on any of them, but I'd just like to get some direction as things you might have concern with we've laid out as basic principles.
I, I think that the principles as laid out are all very good, in my opinion, for, you know, the basis of the discussion. I did want to follow up with where our conversation was going on sustainability, and I think that, for me, in our, in my goals, having a sustainable, as most sustainable, just like, as cleaned up as best we can using the technology available, sustainable the best we can using land uses that we want out there, and not be the, the cart driving the horse, but, you know, put it forward where what we want is the most important thing, and then build the sustainability into it from that direction, rather than sustainability driving us or forcing us into making a decision that we don't think meets our goals.
Yeah, the two should never be contradicting each other, I agree.
Okay.
So I have a couple of questions for Lloyd. So, and I'm just gonna throw this out there, and you just let me know if it's in the principles or not, but having a zero-carbon development, is that part of the principles that you laid out?
That, yeah, the, the basic objectives laid out in the sustainability framework...
Oh, okay, you just...
Would be incorporated.
Incorporated all, okay, got it.
Right, so I, yeah, and same as at the Planning Commission, we did not lay out the details from the sustainability framework into this.
Okay, thank you, I'm good.
Okay, anything else, from anyone?
No, I guess, if anybody see anything on the list that Lloyd's referring to, on, I see most of the, the stuff that I talked about last meeting was in there, and plus the Planning Commission stuff, and, yeah, so, I guess the answer to Lloyd's question, is there anything in here that you just emphatically can't have in there, so, or want to discuss?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, so, before we move on to public comment, is there any other discussion?
So, I want to be clear about what we're doing for next meeting. It sounds like we're getting into land use then, so, you know, provided that I have, we have the answers to the questions, I can do that, sounds like we want to have a presentation, I don't know if we want to do that, that meeting, or another meeting, I'm just trying to figure out, like, how to prepare for the upcoming meetings, and in what order I should expect all these things to happen.
Well, I, I don't, what I heard from the mayor was that we weren't gonna have the presentation from Bioregional at the next meeting, that you were, you were gonna have a discussion at that time whether or not you wanted to do that, and I've heard various opinions about that.
Yeah.
And just keep in mind that he is, lives in...
England.
In England.
Oh.
So the scheduling is gonna...
Oh, okay, I didn't realize.
Or in Desai, so...
Right.
Perhaps then staff can check with, with Mr. Desai on his availability, when he will be in town, if, if he plans to be in town at all in the next few weeks or month or two, and, you know, that might be...
Given that he's been contracted through the applicant, I think we'll work through the applicant in coordinating that.
Do you think that it's like, you know, we're kind of splitting hairs here, but do you think that it's important to have that presentation before we kind of jump into what we think about land use, because there may be information in that, that...
Wouldn't that be in his staff report, in his report, and that's part of our record, and...
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what you guys, I'm open to anything, I don't know what you guys want to do with this, but like, I can read it, and it's hard for me to say right now, because I haven't read it, so when I read it, maybe I might come back and say, yeah, I'm really, this has brought up a lot of questions for me, and I'm really gonna want a presentation, or I might say, I don't need a presentation, I got it, so...
I mean, I think, tell me if I'm wrong here, but at, at the next meeting, we're gonna have our questions answered, and I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of questions to the feedback that comes from, the responses from those questions, I have a feeling we probably won't talk about land use, not, I mean, it's hard not to...
Well, I didn't think we were gonna talk about it today, but we're just trying to get into it.
I think we'll really dive in. I think we'll really dive deep into that. I think we'll be talking mostly about the response, the responses to our question.
I just don't want to, I want to be prepared. So if we're going to get into land use, you know, I want to have everything written out. I don't want to miss beat. I want to just, I want to have all my data, just like you backed everything up with, like, your links. I want to have that ready. And so, like, I know Clark's itching to get to it, and I respect that. And so, you know, I'm trying to figure out, hey, are we doing it? Because I'll come prepared. Maybe I should just prepare no matter what.
I don't want to have a discussion on land use.
Okay.
You know, I'd rather just have it all be about the questions that are going to be responded to, that we submitted. And it's going to be hard not to, you know, talk about it a little bit on the edges, but I don't think that's the focus.
I'm okay with that. I just want to know in advance.
Okay.
So that'll be the meeting on Monday, the 24th, that we're going to be talking about, or getting our answers to our questions? And when does staff anticipate having those in writing? Or are we going to have a written response to those? So we'll have those by the, usually we have 72 hours, you know, three days to review something. So are we planning to have staff's, our questions answered? And on what date will we have those in writing for us to be able to review the material?
The Thursday prior?
Okay.
The Thursday prior. We have a council meeting that night.
Right.
It comes out usually Thursday night, Friday morning, just like a regular
So we're, but normally our meetings are on Thursday, so we have most of a week to prepare. This will mean we will have two days to prepare.
No, it'll be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, right? 72 hours.
Just like we used to have. We used to have meetings on Mondays.
Yeah.
And staff reports would come out by Friday morning. So.
Maybe as you have them, you could, because I'm sure you've got to answer one at a time, right? So you probably have some answers already.
We've been trying to avoid that approach because it's so haphazard. But let me see what we can do. We'll try to get you, I understand the complication with the council meeting and
Because Cliff has 74 questions.
Because, I mean, we have, we're going to have a week before
You know, that's a lot. I want to absorb it all. I really want to have time to digest this information. So.
I appreciate that. We'll, if you can let me not give you a firm answer tonight, but I understand your desire to get them as early as possible and also the conflict with the Thursday night meeting.
Yeah, I mean
We'll try to, we'll try to at least get you a bulk of the questions earlier than Thursday.
Okay. And then what I'm hearing is that we would not have the, have a presentation on bioregional, at the next meeting, but we would have a, on the agenda, you know, discussion of how to use the report, if to use it.
If that's your pleasure.
Well, I think it should be attached to the packet, and we can decide how we want to implement it at that point.
Right.
Whether we find it beneficial or not.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, if, it's a report.
It's a report.
It's an opinion. And then it goes beyond what's even been studied.
Mm-hmm.
So, data, you know, I mean, more stuff for the record. That's
Yes.
Okay.
I'm fine to do whatever with it.
So, so one thing that
We'll look at it and we'll all decide as a council.
One thing I did want to mention to the council is that when we had our, one of our subcommittee reports, and we're not reporting out on a subcommittee because that's not on our agenda, but there was a study done by San Francisco about their multimodal station. And I think that's a really good report also to read for the council or for at least to look through because it addresses their plans for the multimodal station. I think that that's something that really applies to the Baylands, and I ask that that be put in the record. And I think that that's a very important document that has been submitted by San Francisco and that it is in the Baylands. So it really should apply, just like any other study.
Okay.
Should be part of the record.
That's a good selection. So, or suggestion. So could, I recommend then that staff email us a copy of that.
Well, I think it was one of Terry's questions, actually. So it will be included in the response of the question.
It was. I just wanted to, to, you know, because it's a large document with lots of colored drawings and lines and arrows and colored pictures. It might be interesting to, some of the transit portion of the Baylands process. So.
Okay. Great.
Just to add to your reading pleasure.
Well, how about Truck deliver this?
I mean, I hate to waste paper, but it would be nice if we, if it's that big, if we had copies of it.
This is going to be big. They'll be prepared.
It'll be a lot. It'll be a lot.
Cancel all my plans for like, the three days between getting the packet and
Don't go out of town that weekend.
Oh, my God.
We'll see. We'll see if we can get way through it all.
You read it and give us a synopsis.
No, no, I meant, he's meaning the questions are going to be big.
Oh, yeah, I know. That's what I'm saying. I just, at first I was like, ah. But now I'm really, actually, now I'm really starting to wrap my head around it. I'm like, I don't know if three days is going to be enough time. So you try your best.
Okay. So, anything else for public?
Actually, I, Madison, I've been at this, I think, since you've been in eighth grade.
Yeah, I believe it.
I mean, this project, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully we'll get it before you, you know.
Can I just respond?
Before I retire.
To try to respond a little bit further to Councilwoman Davis's questions, or question about what's going to happen at the next meeting. So we will have this fairly significant dump of questions being answered. Probably not the utmost elegant way to say that, but we'll get a lot of material with regards to your questions. And no doubt, that will generate additional questions. And we're going to have an opportunity at the meeting, I think on the 24th, to try to be as responsive as we can to that. My guess is there will be some takeaways from that that we'll have to do some additional work on. But that, I think, is probably going to be the bulk of your meeting of the 24th. So while you'll certainly want to read the answers to all that, I don't believe there'll be any focus on trying to, you know, make any
Disseminate.
Disseminate, yeah. Or you'll make heads or tails out of it, yes, but maybe not, you know, okay, where do we go with it? That'll become, you know, maybe on the 7th before we get to that. But, you know, this process is somewhat fluid, and we'll see how the 24th goes. Because it's entirely possible that the questions will, you know, you'll want to have further amplification or you'll have further clarification on some of them. And that may take some additional time. So we'll just kind of see how this plays out.
Okay.
Okay.
This is an easy meeting for you, Margaret. You didn't have to say a word. Do you want to say something?
Thank you. I would just like to say it's nice being back. It's been a few years since I've had the privilege of sitting with the council, and I'm happy to see things moving forward. And I look forward to August.
And maybe introduce Margaret at the end. I mean, just introduce her because a lot of people don't
Would you like to introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I apologize. I didn't do that at the outset. I'm Margaret Sahagi of Sahagi Law Firm. And we've been your outside counsel on this matter for, I'm not sure how long since the beginning. So
Since Madison's been in eighth grade.
Absolutely.
Wow. Okay. So moving on, we have a few slips, and we'll start off with public comment. Bill Detmer.
Hi, I'm Bill Detmer. You really need brighter lights up here. Anyway, before I start my rant, I would like to say that if we, anybody has any questions about toxic substances or the ability to remediate any of this stuff, call up the California Department of Toxic Substance Control. Just call them up and ask them directly. I asked them, how can you guys guarantee a place will be safe? And I had 40-minute conversation. They also had some questions about the leachate stuff, you know. So anyway, back to Brisbane. I've been here a long time. And presently, I kind of work half-time and I do maintenance. I see a lot of people. I see a lot of places. And I see what the tight rental market does to people. I see the effects of it. I talk to people that try to rent places. Right now, I see small places going for over $4 a square foot, do the math. It's tough. And you see people doing incredible commutes, using huge amounts of gasoline, et cetera. And what's the solution? It seems to me that if we had more housing, that could soften the demand, and that would lower rents, make it more affordable for the working-class people. And I couldn't live here since 1980. I'd probably be priced out then, but I have a house, so I'm not, you know. But I'm speaking for the people that are basically waiting to be evicted from their houses or their units, when the rents go up, when their landlord dies, when a number of things happen. And they can't live here. And so I'm speaking for them. And so if there were more housing somewhere, and we can't fit another car in Brisbane, just about, so you look around, and here's a big vacant spot next to a train station. And, you know, the first thing is, well, okay, this, you could put a bunch of units there. And that's one of the proposals. And I thoroughly think that this is a reasonable way to go. And if you're talking sustainability, it comes down to density. It's, if you do the math, it's density. Single-family houses are not sustainable. They're expensive. And yes, there's problems. That's why there's engineers and geotechnical people in the Department of Toxic Substance Control. Some of this stuff is out of our hands. But my number-one concern is safety also. I mean, that's why I called these people up and talked for 40 minutes. So I guess my general comment to the city council and also to my fellow Brisbane people is, let's weigh in this balance the needs of people. People really need housing. And there's a lot of comments like, well, they're going to build expensive places. Well, maybe they will build expensive places. Maybe, most of them will be super million-dollar condo units, who, whatever, okay? But there'll be more housing. And I believe that if there's more housing, it will soften the demand and make people's lives a lot better. And somebody's going to make money on these things, you know? There's a lot of money out there because this land is worth a lot if it's developed. If it's not developed, it's not worth anything. So I don't care who makes the money, but all I care about is the people. I want people to have housing. That's it. Just, I want people to have better lives. And that's my concern. You know, I, I work with these people and I care for them. And I, you know, so that's, that's what it is. And thank you for the incredible amount of work you guys do. It's, you know, it's a lot. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. David Crabbe.
I actually have a handout if you don't mind.
Okay.
Isn't this already on our dais?
I sent you a letter which was
Yeah, well, we got it.
Very late. I don't know if you had a chance.
We did get a copy.
Is that this?
This is, this is a private copy of it.
Oh, we have it.
We have it.
We have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure if you were going to get it in time because I literally, at 4:00 to 7:00, I
Yeah, our city clerk is on it.
Yeah.
We have it. We haven't read it.
Okay.
Or I haven't read it.
It may be useful to refer to it. But first, Madam Mayor and members of the councils unofficially here, first, I sympathize with all you're dealing with. I mean, it is amazing. And I'm worried about paralysis through analysis on this whole thing. It's been going on for so long. And I'm inclined with, to go with Mr. Conway. Let's get to the land, land use aspect of this thing. But anyway, so the point I'm making with this letter, I've cut it down really short here, is this, tonight was talking about principles. And the outline of the principles that were submitted by staff, I reviewed, and it's all pretty good. I wonder if, is it possible for staff to put the principal section up on the slide, which is called Distribution of Land Use? Because everything was really complete. And you got the distribution of land use, and it was really a blow-off in terms of what it said. It didn't really say much of anything. And so I have a suggestion, which is part of that letter. Yeah. Within individual planning areas, key planning features, transit-oriented development. The big elephant in the room, you know, is housing. And I feel if this is principles, this is what we're going to use to decide, are you going to go? That I feel you need to consider housing. And I suggested an additional principle under this distribution of land use, which addresses housing. And it's written in the letter here. Determine the number of jobs that can be expected within the Baylands plan. Provide for enough new housing units to accommodate those expected employees within the Baylands elsewhere in the city of Brisbane or in collaboration with other cities, so as not to exacerbate the current jobs-housing imbalance in San Francisco and San Mateo County. That is my, my whole thing is jobs-housing balance. Don't make it worse. And that leaves you wide open to, if you do no, no office buildings, no housing, no need. I mean, in terms of a pure balance. But if you're going to do 4 million square feet of office buildings, you've got to really provide some housing somewhere along the way. And I've left it open elsewhere in the city of Brisbane, because I've heard some of your residents say, hey, we have properties in Brisbane, we can develop this naught on the Baylands, which gets away from the toxic issue. That could be a part of it. So I'm suggesting that you seriously consider this. I suspect you're not ready tonight to do it. But with everything, if all principles are going to guide you along, and suddenly you come to land use, those two principles are no guidance, really, to you. And you need to, need to get this elephant squared away. So that's that. Second thing, this big discussion about sustainability. I, you know, I go back to sustainability 25 years. And, you know, starting with, you know, meeting the needs of this generation without compromising the needs of future generations. That's the basic definition of sustainability. Sustainability is based on a three-legged stool. Environment, economy, social equity. Unfortunately, the framework is environment. I highly, very, very little about social equity, very little about economy in there. And so I am, it really hurts me when I hear that this is going to be the most sustainable project, and it doesn't include economy and doesn't include social equity. And social equity is a jobs-housing balance, because that is the problem, the biggest sustainability issue we have in San Mateo County right now is the housing crisis. It's causing all the traffic. It's causing all the greenhouse gases. It's causing all the expense, cost of living. It's driving people out. It's bad. And so we need to deal with it. And so I just, do not exacerbate the problem, is what I'm saying. Try to get that balance somewhere. So, you know, if they say for the planning commissions, they have 2 million square feet of office building. If you're compromising on it, maybe it's 1 million square feet of office building, 1,000 new housing units or something that balances off. And I put in here an equation. The number of jobs times 2/3 equals the number of housing units needed. And that's based on a rule of thumb that you need, that one housing unit for every 1.5 jobs in a community. And it's kind of an average. You figure sometimes there's two people working in a family, sometimes it's one person working in a family, they're averaging it out. So if you use that equation, look at every proposal that's before you. Take the square footage of commercial spaces in there. If, find, ask the developer how much job, how many jobs, or do research, find how many jobs are going to be developed. Multiply it by 2/3. That's the housing unit you need to do. Then figure out where you're going to put them, on the Baylands, somewhere else in Brisbane, or work with San Francisco, somehow help them finance some land that they, that will actually benefit you or one of the other communities. But don't do commercial only without housing because it is not sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Scharfman.
Good evening, Mayor Liu and council members. Thank you very much for your service, through the generations, as it were. And Ms. Padilla, if you could go back to the diagram of land uses that had the areas in color on it, please. And there's a principle that I'd like to introduce here in response to the identification by staff of Area 1. And that is the principle that we hold dear in the United States of private property rights. And to remind the council that it is not appropriate or consistent with the core values of this nation to plan to take the private property of one landowner of this nation to plan to take the private property of one landowner to financially benefit another, in this case UPC land for recology. But those, that's a central principle. Also, by the way, expanding the recology facility as currently proposed will cut off access to the least-served Caltrain station on the line, which I believe is in conflict with some of your sustainability goals. But what I want to do is just give a couple of comments regarding the BioRegional report that was submitted by us in this past week. In November 2015, the council adopted a blueprint for sustainability as a way to, quote, "heal the land, contribute to prosperity that is fair and equitable, strengthen our relationship with nature, and enhance Brisbane's commitment to community values." It was based on this framework, on the one, it based this framework, the sustainability framework, that is, on the One Planet Living Model, created by BioRegional, which is one of the most respected environmental nonprofits addressing these issues in the world. As many of you know, UPC initially was, was not in favor of this and came along very slowly. And what, what we were concerned about was that One Planet wasn't widely adopted in the U.S. And once the sustainability framework was adopted, we took the council's action to heart and really wanted to analyze our proposal and see analysis of the other proposals that were analyzed in the EIR. And that's, that was so that we had an idea of what we were in for in terms of compliance of any plan that would be adopted. This is a practical business decision that we made. BioRegional was here several months ago. There were discussions about moving in that direction, and frankly, we expected it to go further, the city-sponsored efforts in that area. We took matters into our own hands and wanted to have that analysis done. BioRegional, in their analysis, did, as you'll see when you review it, also look at three additional development scenarios. It says, "Go further toward achieving BioRegional's, quote, 'core pillars of sustainability of environment, economics, and social equity.'" And BioRegional's conclusion was that while no individual proposal that they reviewed can reconcile community needs, economic necessities, and sustainability goals, the most sustainable and environmentally sound plan is one that contains the maximum amount of jobs and housing near transit. The BioRegional, like so many other environmental, housing, and transportation experts, recognizes this as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make a positive impact on two of the greatest problems of our time, the affordability crisis on the regional level and climate change on a planetary level. Lastly, they encourage UPC and the council to work toward compromise so we don't let this opportunity slip away. I just wanted to reiterate, as I have in the past, on behalf of our company, that we invite that opportunity to work together and create the most sustainable and engaging, inviting development in the region. Thank you.
Thank you. Prem Lau?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. I have a few items. Are they going to be able to see them on the screen, Ms. Padilla? Okay. So the first issue that I have to discuss is the fact that there is a current lawsuit going on concerning the Oakdale Irrigation District, and the lawsuit is the Oakdale Groundwater Alliance and others versus the Oakdale Irrigation District, or OID. And I don't have access to court filings and documents like are available in the federal court system, because this case is via the Stanislaus County Superior Court. So they have a paper-based system instead of a PDF file-based system, and in order to get documents, they have to actually mail them to you in paper form. I was on the phone this morning with a clerk at the Civil Division of the Stanislaus County Superior Court, and she informed me that there had been a tentative ruling issued on the 6th of July that was not even visible yet on the court's website. And apparently, the OID, or the Oakdale Irrigation District, had made some kind of last-ditch motion to vacate on some kind of jurisdictional issues, and the judge had denied their motion in that tentative ruling. So I wanted to let you know that, because the reason I'm bringing this up is the issue that the Oakdale Irrigation District is supposed to be supplying a significant portion of the water to any development of the Baylands, whether, if it's a residential development. And essentially, what the case is dealing with is whether the Oakdale Irrigation District has the water that it's claiming to have. And I think the issue is that they don't, and that they're selling water that they don't really have. So although there may not be a legal implication on the Baylands' development project, there is a conceptual issue of, are you going to put residential development on a property that really is not going to be able to get any water? So I thought I would like to bring that up. Now, there are two articles that I sent to Ms. Padilla that are dealing with this topic. Now, both of them are from April of this year. So they're a few months old, and I've added some highlighting so that all five of you can take a look at those when you have a moment. I'm not going to get too deeply into that, because I think those are self-explanatory. So that is the first issue that I wanted to bring up. The second issue deals with the funding of some of the organizations that came up here to vouch for housing on the Baylands. And I think Mr. Scharfman mentioned tonight that UPC pays for everything. But I don't really know that Brisbane's residents realize that some of the organizations that came up to speak on behalf of housing on the Baylands were actually funded by the developers. And so this is a screenshot of a posting from the Brisbane Baylands Facebook page on which Green Belts Alliance, which is an organization which made a presentation here to city council, thanks the Brisbane Baylands for sponsoring them, and sponsoring one of their events. And the developer, Brisbane Baylands, says, "It's our pleasure. Thank you for your great work," after they had thanked the Baylands for giving them money. So I just want everyone who is viewing, who has viewed all of these organizations coming up to vouch for housing on the Baylands, to realize that many of them are receiving money, at least some of them, are receiving money from the developer itself. So, and that's one example of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lyora Tonwadko?
Hi, thanks for your time this evening. My name is Lyora Tonwadko. I'm from the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. And I can address what the previous gentleman up here talked about. We, the Brisbane Baylands sponsors two of our events, and it's very transparent as to how much and at what levels they gave to us. But the majority, the vast majority of our funding is from foundations and grants that we apply for that we get, and all of that money is, you know, vastly outweighs the money that we get from sponsors for all of our events. So I encourage you guys to look at our financials as well as Green Belts. Sorry for that sort of tangent, but I'm here to advocate for housing on the Baylands, as you probably guessed. There was an article this week in the San Jose Mercury that talked about the slowdown of job growth in San Mateo County due to housing costs. For, for the past few years, job growth has been steadily growing at a pretty rapid pace. But in 2017, it slowed down considerably in San Mateo County and Santa Clara County. And the, the reason is because the cost of living here and the inability to attract workers like we used to. And so as you're considering whether or not to build housing, not only is it a sustainability question, but it's also an economic development question. And working throughout the county, a lot of times, we see smaller proposals, and the argument is, you know, this is only 100 units, this isn't going to really put a dent in housing costs. But that is not true for this particular proposal. The scope of it is massive, as you know, and it, it really has potential to, to have an incredible impact on the renters and the younger people, the service workers, people that are in this area. You guys have a great opportunity to really help a lot of folks. In that vein, last week, I got an email from a woman who, whose rent went up $150 a month. She lives in San Bruno, and she was wondering if I could help her. And I readily admit that I live in sort of a personal bubble. I may have mentioned this before, but I live with my grandmother, and my rent with her is negotiable, to say the least. And so I, I sort of thought, like, $160 a month, like, that's, that's not that much. Like, me, that's, that's fine. And I turned to my colleague, and I said, and I told him the story about this woman, and he lives in Oakland and works in San Mateo, he has a terrible commute. And he said, "Well, if my rent got raised $100 a month, I would really have to start cutting back on food, because that's how tight my budget is." He's an incredible person, he went to Berkeley, and it really sort of opened my eyes with how much we could do for people, you know, 100 of dollars a month, $200 if their rent goes down that much, how big of a change it would be in their lives. So I appreciate all the thought and time that you're giving to this proposal, and I really do encourage you to include housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Another slip coming up. Thank you. Barbara Ebel?
Hey, I'm just going to be speaking extemporaneously tonight, because I hadn't planned to pester you guys. One thing I will point out, I don't want it to get lost, is that while the Baylands' housing, transit-oriented development is supposed to reduce congestion region-wide, it is supposed to greatly increase congestion locally. So I just, when Lori was talking about looking at this as both globally, regionally, and locally, I wanted to make sure that that did not get lost, because, you know, they really try to pay up the regional aspect, but it is going to have the opposite effect And then the carbon value of this multimodal transit station, if I remember correctly, I didn't bring my notes, is 64,000 metric tons of CO2e. So I would propose that we put in that many panels if we don't build housing, so that we're at least at a net-zero game. And we have plenty of space to do that. That is, you know, different numbers on the internet, but that's well within the land area of the Baylands. So I also, I'm one of those people who would like to see nothing but solar panels out there so that we don't exasperate the jobs-housing imbalance. However, because that land was zoned for commercial and industrial uses, I'm not sure we can completely do away with that. I can almost get behind what the editor gentleman said here, that I do believe that we should try to provide housing for whatever number of jobs we do provide. I think that's very reasonable. We may not be able to do that unless we're willing to build on toxic land, and I hope it won't come to that, since so many of the council members said that one of their highest priorities is safety. Which gets me to my next point, and that is, you know, sustainability is great, but I am glad to hear most of you said you would not be led around by the nose by it, because safety is important. And I think a lot of the big questions we have to confront is, how much faith are we going to put in the, in the, the experts? I have something here, just came up on NPR, US air pollution still kills thousands every year. Study concludes at Harvard that if we reduced particulates by like 1%, we could save 12,000 lives. And these are the governmental standards you want us to have so much faith in and to trust our children and all future generations to. And they're still, you know, killing thousands of people a year with air pollution. So I just really hope that you guys will make safety. When you say you make safety your number-one priority, it won't be "safety," you know? They tell me it's safe, so everything's okay. It'll actually be safe. So also, I don't want to be led around by the housing thing, because there's no housing out there now. And, you know, so if we don't put housings, at least we're not making something worse on some level. There is that jobs question, though. And I just hope we can, like I said, provide that elsewhere in town. One of, another interesting thing that came up in the DEIR, that you would have had to really, read it really closely to have caught, is that the majority of recology, or a large number of recology's employees work out and live in Hercules. So I think even if we didn't do a whole lot of development there, we allowed recology to expand, or UPC did, we could at least be providing transportation for all those recology employees that are coming from Hercules. So don't discount what's already there. There are gains to be made. Another interesting thing that came up in the news recently is one of the fastest-growing sections is shipping and warehousing. Not retail, retail shrinking. So if we really want this to be progressive and address the growing needs of this community, maybe shipping and warehousing right there on 101 would be good. Amazon is dying for major urban distribution centers. It's a possibility. And then I also wanted to just say a few words about home size, is I have a little infographic here that floats around the internet, and the average size of home in the 1950s was 1,000 square feet, and in 1980, it was 2,200 square feet, and family sizes have shrunk. So I think the real answer to the housing problem is not building, 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 so much as rezoning, 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 and letting people turn some of these McMansions into duplexes, because then we can exist, we can double our population within the same envelope and make those homes more affordable, because I don't know who affords McMansions. And just throw this out there, I know I'm over time. In New Zealand, they have something really interesting called a reserve, reverse half lease. And so basically, you build two homes on the lot, or you have a duplex, and one person pays the lease, is considered a lease situation, and tenant A pays tenant B $1, and tenant B pays tenant A $1. And this is how they, they don't rezon, but allow, kind of get around the rezoning thing and allow people to divide their properties through a legal, this other legal instrument. So I thought that was interesting. And, because I think that's actually a much more sustainable direction to go than just building, 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 because, as I said this before, 7 billion people on this planet, 7 million people living in the Bay Area can't make this sustainable. You just can't. You know, our ecological footprint of the Bay Area alone extends to Nevada. So, thanks a lot. Bye.
Thank you. Okay. I have no more slips. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic? Nope. Seeing no hands. We'll move on. So number, item five, Mayor Council Matters, City Council's Schedule Concerning Plan's Deliberations. So we have as an attachment the schedule of upcoming meetings. We have meetings on July 24th, August 7th, August 17th, and August 31st. Is there any other update?
Nope.
Okay. So that is our schedule. So that is our schedule. Any comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment. You know, Tere, when you talked about, you know, not having, you know, that we should plan for the Baylands using our values, and then applying sustainability principles to that, I, I agree with that. And the reason why I do is that, because I, I believe in this council, and I believe in this community, that, that we'll eventually, you know, put forth, I think, something pretty When we first started doing the Parkside Precise Plan, we weren't all together, but now we are. And I, and I feel that eventually, we'll, we'll get there with our deliberations for the Baylands. I mean, I really hope. I mean, we do have an amazing opportunity. I mean, it's such an incredible site. It really can make a difference. And, you know, it's going to be up to us to have the courage, and, 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 and put forth the information that, that really inspires our community and informs our community, and is really based on, on what the facts are, and so, and what our values are. I mean, I think, I think they can coexist. So that, that's what I hope happens.
Thank you, Cliff. Any other questions on the schedule?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the next item, Written Communications. I want to acknowledge receipt of the written communications we've received regarding the Brisbane Baylands project. Between June 20th and, and July 13th, we've received the following written correspondence from David Crabbe on July 13th, Mace Swanbeck on July 13th, Gavin Hayes on July 12th, Deb Horn on July 11th, Lily Chen on July 11th, Clara Johnson on July 11th, UPC and BioRegional One Planet Living on July 11th, Raymond Hodges on July 5th, Eric Xu on July 5th, Judy Taylor on July 5th, Chris Nelson on July 5th, Ryan McPhee on July 5th, Nadine Mackey on July 5th, Adam Subia on July 5th, Lisa Snyder on July 5th, Brian Hofer on July 5th, Sandra Manning on July 5th, Tony Varios on June 30th, Steve Rodriguez and Josiane Emmerin on July 29th, and recology, excuse me, on June 29th, and recology on July 6th. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I adjourned.[1769.53][1769.53]